For attending in person or online, this regular meeting of the City Council, the City of Waverly in Iowa. Today is March 3rd, it is 7:00, and this meeting is called to order. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Council. If you're keeping score at home, we're one short. Councilperson Myers has called away to a family emergency. So, we'll be voting with six. Friends on the council, that your city clerk has prepared for you an agenda, and this would be a good time for a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Excellent. Any discussion? This is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that passes unanimously. Item D, approval of the minutes. Now is the time to have a motion to approve the February 17, 2025, regular meeting minutes, and the February 23, 2025, social isolation and loneliness listening project session, combined meeting with City Council and Human Equity and Diversity Commission, and the February 24, 2025, study session minutes. Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the February 17, 2025, regular meeting minutes, February 23, 2025, social isolation and loneliness listening project session, combined meeting with City Council and Human Equity and Diversity Commission, and the February 24, 2025, study session minutes.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? This will be a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that passes unanimously. Item E, our guest councilperson, I would like to welcome Mr. Bill Root. Unfortunately, he can't be here tonight, but we will look forward to welcoming him to the next meeting. He's a downtown businessperson. Friends, we're going to start some public hearings. I know that this can be somewhat repetitive. A cynical person might even say boring, but this is democracy right here. This is the opportunity for any and all citizens to make their case.
This is the way the sausage is made.
This is how the sausage is made, it's also required by law. We are at item F, number one. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on ordinance 1160, amending sewer rates, charges, and minimum rates for fiscal year 2025-26, and again fiscal year 2026-27. The mayor and city council will entertain any comments. After all comments, the hearing will be declared closed, and the following action will be considered. Madam Clerk, have you received any written or oral comments?
I have not, Your Honor.
Is there anyone who would rise to speak to ordinance 1160? I see no one. This public hearing is now closed. Can I have a motion to approve the third and final reading of ordinance 1160, amending sewer rates, charges, and minimum rates for the next two fiscal years?
I'll move approval of the third and final reading of ordinance 1160, amending sewer rates, charges, and minimum rates for fiscal years 2025 to 2026, and 2026 through 2027.
Second.
I'll give that to councilperson Dranko. And so, is there any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Carla?
Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes. Thank you, that passed unanimously. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on ordinance 1161, amending water rates, charges, and minimum rates for fiscal year 2025-26, and again fiscal year 26-27. The mayor and city council will entertain any and all comments. After all comments, the hearing will be declared closed, and the following action will be considered. Madam Clerk, have you received any written or oral comments?
I have not, Your Honor.
Is there anyone who would rise to discuss ordinance 1161? I see no one. This meeting is closed. Is there a motion?
I will move approval of the third and final reading of ordinance 1161, amending water rates, charges, and minimum rates for fiscal years 2025 through 2026, and 2026 through 2027.
Second.
Thank you. This is up for discussion. Any?
Clarification, just the hearing is closed, not the meeting.
The hearing is closed. Thank you. Yes.
We're not ready to close the meeting just yet.
Not just yet. Thanks, Tim.
Close.
All right. Now you've got me baffled. It's on the table, there was no discussion. Carla, let's have a roll call vote.
Rafi?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
That passed unanimously. Item three. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on ordinance 1162, amending solid waste rates, charges, and base rate for fiscal year 2025 to through 2026, and again fiscal year 2026 and 2027. The mayor and city council will entertain any comments. After all comments, the hearing will be declared closed, and the following action will be considered. Madam Clerk, have you received any written or oral comments?
I have not, Your Honor.
Is there anyone who would rise now to speak to ordinance 1162? This public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the third and final reading of ordinance 1162, amending solid waste rates, charges, and base rate for fiscal years 2025 through 2026, and 2026 through 2027.
Second.
It's on the table. Is there any discussion? Carla, let's have a roll call vote.
Kengas?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Bergen?
No.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Bergen?
No.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
That passed unanimously. Item five. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on resolution 2525, a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed $700,000 general obligation bonds, called ECPs. The mayor and city council will entertain any comments. After all comments, the hearing will be declared closed, and the following action will be considered. Madam Clerk, have you received any written or oral comments?
I have not, Your Honor.
Is there anyone who would rise to resolution 2525? I see none. This public hearing is declared closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve resolution 25-25, a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed 7,000,000 general obligation bonds, ECP.
Second.
Thank you. It's on the table. Any discussion?
Just to clarify for the public, the ECP is essential corporate purpose, and the next one we have GCP, which is general corporate purpose, and just...
Yeah, thank you.
...definition change of what the money is spent on, and how much we can...
So, friends, any more discussion? You appear ready to vote. This is a roll call vote. Carla?
Jones?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, which brings us to item six. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on resolution 2526, a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed $600,000 general obligation bonds, known as GCP. The mayor and city council will entertain any comments. After all comments, the hearing will be declared closed, and the following action will be considered. Madam Clerk, have you received any written or oral comments?
I have not, Your Honor.
Is there anyone who would rise now to speak to resolution 2526? I see none. This public hearing is declared closed. Anyone who would like to make a motion?
I will move approval of resolution 25-26, a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed $600,000 general obligation bonds, GCP.
Second.
Thank you. And any discussion? I hear none. This is a roll call vote. Carla?
Drankow?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
That passed unanimously. We're now on to item F, public comments on items which are not on the agenda. Is anyone rise to speak to any matter that is not on the agenda tonight? If so, rise to the microphone now. I see no one, so we'll move to item G, the consent calendar. You have three events in front of you, friends. Is there any discussion on these? I hear none. This is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
We need to have a motion first.
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, now you want any discussion? I hear none. Voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Item G passed unanimously. Item H, we are now back to regular business. So, under regular business, number one, resolution 2527. This is a resolution accepting the fueling station project as complete, and approving invoice 38972 as final payment in the amount of $279,918.53 to Dix Petroleum Company of Tripola, Iowa. Can I have a motion?
I'll move approval of resolution 25-27 as read by the mayor.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? So, when did the fueling station open?
We fully rolled it out, it was in Monday of last week.
Okay.
There are other staff that have been using it prior to public work staff, and waiting on the iPad to fully be operational. So, everyone that could use it had the app, actually.
Okay. So, people are filling up?
Yeah, everything's working great.
Good.
Excellent. Good. Any more discussion? This is a roll call vote. Carla?
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, which takes us on to item two, resolution 2528, a resolution setting March 24, 2025, at 6:45 PM in the council chambers of the city hall as the date, time, and place for a public meeting, hearing meeting, on the proposed budget statement. Can I have a motion?
I will move to approve resolution 2528, a resolution setting March 24, 2025, at 6:45, is that correct? 6:45 in council chambers, city hall, as the date, time, and place for a public hearing meeting on the proposed budget statement.
Second.
Thank you.
So, it was one we have to have a meeting, then close that one, and then...
Yep.
That can be the only topic of the meeting. So, we can sit there and look at each other for 12 minutes, then close it.
I'll have to try to remember to get here this year.
That would be good. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All righty, let's have a roll call vote.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, which will bring us to item three. This is the first reading of ordinance 1163, an ordinance amending section 105.4.11, illegal parking fines of chapter 105 of the Waverly Municipal Code of Ordinances. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the first reading of ordinance 1163, an ordinance amending section 105.4.11, illegal parking fines of chapter 105 of the Waverly Municipal Code of Ordinances. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I just don't like the way that's worded. Which part?
That we have illegal parking fines? That our parking fines are illegal?
So, does the...
So, we have fines for illegal parking.
Right, so, yes.
It's almost, it's like, should we have fines for illegal parking?
Yes, you're arguing that illegal is describing the fines and not the parking.
All right.
So, I have a question to put forward to the council in terms of how this is worded. So, in part A, we have the fines for $20 for illegal parking, and then there's a $100 fine for the disability parking space. And then if you go down to the third chap, third paragraph, it says, "This fine shall increase to $25 if the parking violation is not paid within 30 days." Do we need to clarify that this $20 fine shall increase so that nobody says, "But my $100 fine didn't get paid in 30 days, so now it goes down to 25?" Or does the fact that it's being increased make it obvious?
Well, and do we need to increase the other one if they haven't paid it?
You can't.
We can't?
The code does not allow for handicap parking to be increased.
Oh. Okay.
I would remind you that this is how it will appear in the Code of Ordinances, just if that matters to you, that this...
Right. Well, given the fact that it's referred to as a fine of $20, I feel like we could refer to it as this $20 fine to clarify which fine is being increased.
This fine.
But I don't know if that's necessary. So, that's why I'm kind of putting it out to the council if they think that...
You can't...
The $20 fine shall increase to 25.
I mean, right now it says, "This fine shall increase." But that's, I mean, so it's implied they're talking about the $20 fine and not the $100 fine.
Yeah, so you just want to change it to the $20 fine.
I'm just suggesting that we insert this $20 fine shall increase. That's my...
Just insert $20 in front of the fine.
Yes. Are we feeling okay about that, council?
Yeah.
And I think that was your motion. Will you accept a friendly amendment?
I will.
Chief, how many tickets do you generally issue a year? Ballpark?
700?
700?
Wow.
For parking?
Yeah.
In Waverly?
Do you know how many...
How many of those are handicap related?
That, I'd have to, I can get back to you on that.
That's fine. If you don't know.
Okay, Jen, you were second on that. Would you also accept a friendly amendment?
Yes.
But if you're gonna, between those two paragraphs, then you need to say, "These fines may be charged," because you, it says this fine, you have two of them.
Oh, in the second paragraph?
It should be these fines.
Yep.
Oh.
Okay. Everyone's agreeable to that.
I'm agreeable to that amendment, yes.
Okay, you now have first reading of ordinance 1163 in front of you with these two amendments. Are you prepared to vote?
I have to go back to a first reading the next time.
Yep.
So, it wouldn't... You can vote on the changes.
Yes. All right. Is that the will of the council? Just trying to help you do what you want to do.
It's fine.
Well, I'm assuming that we're not under any time constraints to get this done in a timely manner, so...
Well, I'm still four by 700 tickets.
I've thrown out June 1st, so we should be fine.
Okay.
And was there any particular, other than it's been a while since the fines went up, was there any particular reason?
Well, it's the cost of enforcement, and a lot of the changes in here, we, the one change is the $10 to the $20. So, you know, we chose June 1st as the date, since that was when it happened in 2004. But the other change is, is that the state code where it says we cannot assess the additional $5 for the handicap, is that we must charge the $100 as well. So, our ordinance isn't correct. So, this corrects and updates our ordinance to reflect that. And then, by state code, it does not allow us to have those increments of $10 from our 10 to 20, 20 to 30. We can only increase it to $5, so...
And why can't you, and why can't you charge them an extra $5 if they park in the handicap parking spot?
I don't know. All it says is that violations shall be charged and collected upon a simple notice of $100 fine payable to the city clerk. Cost or other charges shall not be assessed. And I did not look for the...
Rational.
Yeah.
Okay. There might not have been one.
There?
And we, we don't have a separate fine for snow route violations. It's the same, just illegal.
I think if we did, I would want to move towards what other communities do and have like a snow emergency notice if we were to have an increased fine for that.
Okay. Okay.
Do we send out a, I know now that we're sending out the texts and things for garbage day, do we send out a snow emergency?
Yeah, prior to a snow event, first couple of public works will make them up, and our officers will go around the snow roads and put them on the vehicles.
Oh, okay.
And put them there, just as a reminder.
Nice, okay.
I didn't get one this year.
That's nice.
Usually I get one.
Does that show up on text, go?
We're looking at some options right now with a different system where you can't do that.
Okay.
It's kind of hard to gather those numbers. People that are...
Okay. Council, are you prepared to vote?
So, just to make it clear, we're, we're voting to amend the ordinance, and then the next meeting will be the first reading of the amended ordinance.
Correct. Okay, you appear ready? Well, not all of you, but most of you appear ready to vote. Carla?
Okay. I think, I think it can be a voice vote, but we'll do it... Rafi?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
That passed unanimously. Amending that amendment. Item four. We are now at resolution 2529, a resolution approving a 28E agreement with Bremer County, Iowa, for placement of vehicle registration stops for unpaid parking tickets. Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve resolution 25-29, a resolution approving a 28E agreement with Bremer County, Iowa, for placement of vehicle registration stops for unpaid parking tickets.
Second. Thank you. Okay. Any discussion? So, this is to me, so this is if someone has unpaid parking fines, that they need to pay those fines in order to register their vehicle?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It makes sense.
Okay. Anyone else? Carla?
Kengas?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
That was unanimous. Thank you. That'll take us to number five. This is resolution 2531. This is a resolution approving a collection service agreement by and between municipal collections of America, MCOA, and Illinois Corporation, and the City of Waverly and Iowa Municipal Corporation. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve resolution 25-31, a resolution approving a collection services agreement by and between municipal collections of America Incorporated, MCOA, and Illinois Corporation, and the City of Waverly and Iowa Municipal Corporation, with no fees payable unless money is collected.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? So, this is separate from the previous arrangement between the county and the city. So, this is just if people have too many tickets. And they're from out of county. And they're from, and they're from out of county. Okay.
We can't just go and let the air out of their tires.
Uh, chief?
No, and no...
He's being a thing, so I guess no.
And what's, we did have the city attorneys review this contract, but what this does is, this is not just specific to parking tickets, and we can use it for our ATEs, we can use it for any debt owed to the city for collections.
All right.
It's just one for us, and I know, maybe if we're gonna vote, that's fine, but it just, for us, it's one more layer, because if we don't have another mechanism to collect, what it results for us to do is we really have to put a warrant out for somebody, and
I think, I think it can be a voice vote, but let's do it. Roffey.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Drakehouse.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Roffey.
Yes.
Kengis.
That passed unanimously, amending that amendment. Item four. We are now at Resolution 2529, a resolution approving a 28E agreement with Bremer County, Iowa, for placement of vehicle registration stops for unpaid parking tickets. Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution 25-29, a resolution approving a 28E agreement with Bremer County, Iowa, for placement of vehicle registration stops for unpaid parking tickets.
Second. Thank you. Okay. Any discussion?
So this is to me, so this is if someone has unpaid parking fines, that they need to pay those fines in order to register their vehicle?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It makes sense.
Okay. Anyone else? Carla?
Kengis.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Drakehouse.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Roffey.
Yes.
Kengis.
That was unanimous. Thank you. That'll take us to number five. This is Resolution 2531. This is a resolution approving a collection service agreement by and between Municipal Collections of America Incorporated, MCOA.
Oops.
Nope. I skipped Blackhawk.
Is Blackhawk on there? I thought I checked it out.
It's been pulled from the agenda. It's still in the online version.
Okay.
Oh, it's pulled.
Sorry, sir.
Okay. So now we are on five. Resolution 2531. This is a resolution approving collection services agreement by and between Municipal Collections of America, MCOA, and Illinois Corporation, and the City of Waverly and Iowa Municipal Corporation. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve Resolution 25-31, a resolution approving a collection services agreement by and between Municipal Collections of America Incorporated, MCOA, and Illinois Corporation, and the City of Waverly and Iowa Municipal Corporation, with no fees payable unless money is collected.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
So this is separate from the previous arrangement between the county and the city?
Mm-hmm, correct.
So this is just if people have too many tickets?
And they're from out of county.
And they're from, and they're from out of county. Okay.
We can't just go and put the, or out of their tires.
Uh, chief?
No.
He's rambling, so I guess no.
And what's, we did have the city attorneys review this contract, but what this does is, this is not just specific to parking tickets. We can use it for our ATEs. We can use it for any debt owed to the city for collections.
All right.
It's just one for us, and I know, maybe if we're going to vote, that's fine, but it's just, for us, it's one more layer, because if we don't have another mechanism to collect, what it results for us to do is we really have to put a warrant out for somebody, and we, we do not like doing arrest warrants for a parking violation.
Right.
So as many layers that we can put in there to try to get it resolved prior to getting to that extent, we're, we're trying to do that.
And so this can be used for wherever people live, you can use this?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. This would be great, because I've been getting text messages all week asking me to pay my parking fines in Chicago, and I haven't been there for years, so, a little scammy. Any more discussion? You appear ready to vote. This would be a roll call vote. Carla?
Kengis.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Drakehouse.[1321.33]